Can you hear us on the microphone?
Yeah.
Could you hear us on the microphone?
Oh, also we're getting a headphone here to just, you know, add our listeners to play here and recognize you for perfect.
I'm gonna go ahead and mosey back for a meeting. I will talk to you later.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
You want to take the headphone because you don't want them.
They will work.
Can you get into your, your meeting?
Yeah, I'm there now.
Um, we all good? All right. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Rose City Council meeting, this study session meeting for April fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Time right now is seven P M. It's, uh, White Coffee. Please call the roll.
Council members present, establishing that form for council members, Volter, Hanford, Davis, Campbell, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Right. Thank you very much. Um, and we heard from council member.
Who are you missing again? Kenny.
Kenny. We heard, thank you. We heard from council member Kenny that she would not be here this evening at an earlier meeting, so unless there is objection, we'll consider her absence as an excuse. Saying no objection. Uh, council member Davis, please leave us some questions. Thank you. Correct. Uh, the next item on the agenda is comments from council members of the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi-adjuvational matter that is subject to the public hearing. Uh, three minutes for each speaker. If you're interested in speaking, uh, please go ahead and raise your hands. You can do that by hitting star nine if you're on the phone, or you can hit the raise hand function in Zoom. I see that Bill Sicallus has raised his hand. Uh, we'll go ahead and break it forward into the panel. Hands. Now on the panel, uh, please go ahead and state your name and area of residence or place of business, uh, for the record, and then we'll give that three minutes. Okay, there.
Look, there we go. Is, uh, am I loud and clear now?
Yes, you are. Uh, please go ahead and state your name and area of residence or place of work, and then we'll start the three minutes timer.
Sure. Uh, Bill Sicallus, um, executive director for the Boys and Girls Clubs of Snohomish County. Address is, uh, eight, two, two, three Broadway Everett, Washington. So I'm here, uh, this evening to, uh, um, speak to the agenda item that, uh, uh, about the ground lease and building transfer agreement between, uh, the Boys and Girls Club of Snohomish County and the City of Monroe. So, uh, Mayor Thomas and council members, um, I'm available to, uh, answer any questions if they arise. Um, just, uh, again, a short history of, uh, our tenure in, in Monroe. Uh, we, we started the Boys and Girls Club in nineteen eighty-one. At, uh, the, uh, former bus barn on, uh, Frank Wagner Elementary School property. And then in, um, nineteen ninety-seven, uh, the city, uh, built the current facility, the Youth Activities Building. Have with funds that was, uh, that became available on the sale of the property where Fred Meyer sits today on Highway Two. Uh, those dollars were, uh, put out to, uh, the residents for, um, a variety of choices in the Boys and Girls Club. Was the, uh, top vote getter in that, uh, selection process, and those funds were used to, uh, to build the first phase of thirteen thousand square feet. With, you know, um, in a building that the city owns and, um, currently owns and, uh, on the property that the city owns at, uh, at the park. But then in two thousand and six, uh, we did a thirty-five hundred square foot expansion to add the teen center and the multipurpose room and the kitchen. Uh, with, uh, private donations, uh, to, uh, to cover those. And then, um, twenty twenty-one, um, together we appealed to, uh, the, uh, state legislature for capital funds and we did some, uh, got, uh, two grants. Uh, one to do some deferred maintenance, uh, which are complete, and then, uh, another one to add two thousand square feet, uh, for early childhood education space, uh, to, uh, come up with forty additional slots, uh, that are needed, um, in, in the city. Which brings us, uh, to today, uh, where, um, uh, hopeful, we're, uh, we'll come to a resolution and an agreement that, uh, the, uh, the building will, um, the club itself, the building, uh, will be tr- the ownership would be transferred to the Boys and Girls Clubs and, uh, on a forty-year, uh, ground lease. Been working with, uh, staff, uh, primarily, uh, Deborah Knight and Jacob Roberts on the details of that. Uh, agreement. Uh, we've come to, uh, resolution. There was some points in, uh, give and take, um, on some issues, but, uh, the language in four point three basically satisfied us because other people than those of us on this call.
Mr. McCall, uh, you're here in three minutes. I ask you to wrap up, please.
Okay. Well, we're, uh, we, uh, we're in support of the agreement, so I'll leave it at that and wait for questions if there are any. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. McCallus. Uh, if anybody else is interested in speaking this evening, please go ahead and raise your hand in the attendees list. All right. Thank you. Uh, staying down, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. Uh, so that next item is, uh, council member reported. So we'll go ahead and turn off the council member Campbell. Council member Campbell?
Uh, yeah, uh, you know, attended the, uh, study session last week and tour of the wastewater treatment plant that just, like, probably did a fantastic job. I've been lost since I've been there and actually some of the investments. So, uh, I know already talk P I P and some financing. I'm looking forward to the, the discussion. And also, uh, just a little bit of pride moment for a lot of, uh, city staff and council members before, you know, before my time to put that as priority. It's one of the, some of the important things as a, as a city and as a council, we need to get right, infrastructure, you know, the water to work and kind of the, the basic things. And I just feel like any of that, right? Looking forward to continuing to get that right. So, anyway, that's it.
Thank you, council member Campbell. Uh, council member Hamper.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, nothing to report tonight. I, I'm not feeling well, otherwise I'd be in chambers there, so, thank you.
Thank you, council member Hamper. Uh, council member Davis.
Uh, nothing new to report, just to say, you know, it's good to be back in, uh, everybody face to face.
Thank you, council member Davis. Council member Volter.
And I also was at the, uh, tour last week, which is always interesting. I think it's one of our more interesting tours. Um, I think that our wastewater guys are just doing a great job and look forward to supporting them in the future. Um, tonight I had the Hertz meeting, the peace, home study, the horrible, uh, people. So, uh, not a lot to report there. They're giving an update on the plans. Oh, and tomorrow, um, like tomorrow, council member Fisher and I will be at the J V M Food Bank Garden to greet the, um, young man who actually submitted to existence twenty-two years ago. So, uh, you're forward back next week.
Thank you. Council member Volter. Council member Fisher.
Yeah, we also, um, uh, also the wastewater treatment plant, um, and a big shout out to, uh, the people that are in that very professional, incredibly smart. Really, really good tour, very, very attractive stuff.
Thank you very much, council member Fisher. Council member Scarborough.
Yes, I also went to the, uh, sewer plant presentation. It was very informative, very professional, and like to express my thanks to the people who stayed after hours to show it to us. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Scarborough. All right. Uh, Mayor and City Administrator reports, uh, go this way.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, coming up on April twelfth, we will have a Legislative Affairs Committee meeting. Uh, we will have a continued review of the rules and procedure and an update from Lance Bigley, our Community Development Director, on the comprehensive plan. At the regular city council business meeting, we have a number of consent agenda items, including acceptance of the utility easement agreements. And hopefully the ownership transfer of the Monroe Youth Activities Building, this was discussed, uh, earlier in comments by Mr. Sicallus. And then promotional testing services contract with public safety testing that was presented to the Public Safety Committee, uh, earlier this evening during their, their committee meeting. Looking forward then on new business, we have a memorandum of understanding for bargaining contracts with the sergeants and supervisors. And then first reading, hopefully, again, of ordinance, uh, establishing a budget. We'll have a discussion with council this evening and hopefully get some direction on that as well. Looking forward then to the meeting on the nineteenth, we have a financing human services, or two, human resources committee meeting. And we'll be looking at the two thousand and twenty-one, uh, business survey with our economic development specialist, James Palmer. The employee handbook update with Mr. Orthen, and then recruitment and retention policy and back to that and maybe for the discussion. In the study session, we will have a quick day probation and then presentations from the Snohomish Health District and presentation from the Monroe School District. And then discussing, discussion of parking on the, that's it then for the next two, three days.
Thank you. So if you have any questions for me, this slide on the extent of the agenda. All right. Thank you very much. So you've been doing a good work.
So we were approached by the Monroe Chamber and the Chamber Director, Janelle Drews. And she has submitted a grant application to Snohomish P U D to do a utility wrap at the corner of Lewis and Main, uh, in front of the restaurant Lewis and Main. And what she's asking for is a letter of support from the mayor and the city council. So we wrapped it up just a basic letter of support with a, a couple of sentences, and we're just looking for a thumbs up from council members that we can add your digital signature to that letter of love with.
Are you all okay with having your digital signature? Okay. Council member Scarborough and council member Ian, pretty okay with adding your digital signature to the letter of support? For, uh, the Chamber of Commerce for utility wrap in northwest corner of Lewis and Main? Yes, yes, from council member Hamper, great. And, uh, somebody will follow up with council member. Thank you all. Go ahead.
The next item I have is just a update that the city had a YouTube channel that was dedicated to parks. And we received a comment from a community member saying that it was very difficult to listen to the entire council meeting on our iCompass system because you had to download an M P three that was a pretty large file. And so I just wanted to give kudos to our clerk, Jody Whitehoff, and our, uh, management analyst, Rich Heedner, who worked together to get our council meetings uploaded onto our YouTube channel. Subsequent to that, we also received a comment back saying that it was difficult to download an M P three for the ARPA workshop that was done a week ago, and we were able to upload that to YouTube too. So we're starting to use our YouTube channel for more functionality, and I just wanted to make council aware that if you're ever interested or get community comments, you could send, uh, our residents and interested parties over to our YouTube channel. So we'll share that link with you so you can share it out with others, and we'll be posting that on Monroe this week, Facebook page and others to make sure that word gets out more broadly. Any questions about the YouTube channel?
Any questions?
Just great amount of functionality. We're starting to use and, and upload items to our website. The other thing I wanted to just mention was we have a new regional tourism magazine, and that will launch this week. We actually received a pallet of magazines today. And, uh, we're going to be distributing those to our partners up and down the Sky Valley, the other cities, including Lake Stevens, and that's the regional magazine that we're going to be using for tourism. Wanted to bring that to council's attention. We'll also be showcasing that again on all of our social media sites and page as well. Wanted to just let council know, if you weren't already aware, that we have a new food bank director, Matthew Campbell, uh, is going to replace Cindy Chessie. Her shoes are very hard to fill. She's been a community member here for many, many years. Um, she's retiring. Uh, but Matthew does come with sixteen years of experience with food banks, uh, and other nonprofits, and he started his new role on April eleventh. So we will reach out to, uh, Matthew and look for an opportunity to have him come and present to the city council, just so you have an opportunity to meet him face to face. And then I wanted to bring to the council's attention a couple of retirements, uh, just because these are individuals that have been with the city for a very long period of time. I'm sure that, uh, the press department and the public waters department will share additional information about these individuals. But Dale Olson has been a parks supervisor since April sixteenth, twenty nineteen, so he's retired with thirty-two years, um, at the city of Monroe, which is just a phenomenal career. And then Scott Hawkins, who is our inspection supervisor, has been with the city since, uh, of all things, April sixteenth, two thousand and one. So again, a twenty-one year career with the city of Monroe. Uh, particularly Scott Hawkins and his team, if you don't know what infrastructure inspection does. Uh, they actually ensure that all of our sidewalks, streets, from water to tension, facilities are built to city standard. It's a very important job when we accept, uh, capital projects from developers, ensuring that they meet city standards and we're not going to come back and have maintenance issues right away. So just wanted to bring those, uh, two individuals to council's attention so we could celebrate, uh, their many years of service to the Monroe community.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions, uh, from council members? Saying no, we're gonna move on. Uh, Mayor's report, I was on vacation, uh, last week and a quarter or so. I'm very happy that everything is, uh, able to, to keep things on track here and everything. So, thank you. Everybody, it sounds like the meeting went really well last week with, uh, tour of the sewer street, wastewater street, that's great. And, uh, if I have anything to add at this time, oh, thank you, council member Fisher and Volter for doing the J V M program. It is happening at ten o'clock when I have my regular, kind of, scheduled meetings in town. So, thank you. All right. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and move on to our discussion items for this evening. We're on item seven, seven point one. The real effective ownership transfer in long-term ground lease with Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, Clark Wyckoff, if we could jump into the slideshow, that'd be great. All right. So the Boys and Girls Clubs of Snohomish County and the Monroe City Council have expressed interest in executing a long-term ground lease. Uh, you, you heard, uh, Mr. Sicallus come forward and make some comments at the beginning of the meeting, and I just want to thank, uh, Bill Sicallus up front for his involvement in this process. It's been very collaborative and, uh, real positive kind of, uh, uh, experience. So, next slide, please. Hang on, I'm trying to track it home here too. So, uh, following through with this ground lease would create another step towards what a long-term consistency in council policy frameworks surrounding buildings that, or land that the city has owned and either leased to other public entities or, uh, uh, maintain inter-local agreements allowing those entities to exist in that space. Starting off with the senior center, we have a agreement where we have a, a long-term ground lease with the senior center. So the senior center owns the facility there and, and they're on city ground. Uh, another, uh, long-established, uh, agreement was with Snohomish Regional Fire and Rescue, formerly Monroe Fire, formerly I, Snohomish County Fire District Seven, perhaps somewhere between, and they changed names quite a few times, but, uh, similar agreement. And then finally, uh, those of you that remember when the library was at two eleven West Hill Street, uh, that was a similar situation, uh, where Snow, Snow Isle Library rented a building from the city, and when they moved out, the city chose to, to sell that facility. So, next slide, please. So the provision of service for Monroe youth, the kind of mission of what the Boys and Girls Club does, uh, that needs to be, uh, I think, preserved and continued operation of programs, and the lease does call that out. So we've got youth athletic programs, education, and then early childhood education and youth group type activities. That's an important component of this, that the, the long-term ground lease preserves that, that continuation of that sole, uh, purpose of the Boys and Girls Club. And then those programs further must be based in the city of Monroe and/or Snohomish County, serving our, our local area. Next slide. So the mutually negotiated ground lease terms, uh, it's a forty-year term. The club would accept exclusive financial responsibility for construction projects and maintenance of the building. Presently, the club is responsible for maintenance of the building, but not construction projects. And so that's where the city over the past several years has done multiple projects and, and further back in the past even partnered with or, or been a, uh, component of some of the successful projects that have done there, where the Boys and Girls Clubs have brought their own funds to be agreed, to the table. Taxes and utilities would continue to be paid, but paid by the club. That's also consistent with the way that things work now, and, uh, one of the, the built-in things there at the end of the lease, about two years before the lease is set to expire, good faith negotiations are keyed in there to begin so that, uh, the club and the city can get together beforehand and work out, uh, new agreement, should that be in the interest of both parties. Next slide, please. So staff and volunteer background checks would still be required in a manner consistent with the R C W. Um, and then there is a ninety-day, ninety-day notice requirement if the city or club wants to cancel the lease. If the lease were to expire or be canceled, building ownership would revert back to the city. And, uh, that, um, the city would retain the option at that point in time of accepting the building or ensuring that the building is removed or demolished for if, uh, some occurrence of, of, you know, fire or something like that should happen. Next slide. So, Mr. Sicallus and I have been talking about clearing snow and ice from the parking lot. Uh, the Boys and Girls Club has expressed a concern because of the lack of equipment or availability, really, that they have clubs all around the county and don't have a substantial amount of equipment. In the lease agreement, as it's currently presented, section eleven point two, it's exclusively the responsibility of the Boys and Girls Club to go ahead and complete those services. And like I said, club representatives, so, have requested that the city council consider amending the agreement for city staff to complete this work. Uh, that would present an increase in potential city liability, and it would also create an obligation that could potentially go unfilled. So if city staff aren't available, if city doesn't have equipment, or if we have a snowstorm that's so bad that, uh, the club isn't going to open, but yet we still are mandated to clear the parking lot. And rather than focusing on our primary mission of keeping our, our transportation priority routes open. So, next slide, please. So with that in mind, uh, there's a staff recommendation here is don't create that obligation in the lease, but instead create the option. So, um, include park, the parking lot on the snow and ice operations route, so that would be a, a decision that can be made at the administrative level. It provides the opportunity for the plows to, to, you know, deliver that service in, which is consistent with the request. It doesn't increase the liability by mandating that the city has to do this, and it manages our resource availability. So if there are equipment breakdowns per substantial storm or we need to fo- focus elsewhere, we have the option to do that. But again, the first thing we would do is add it to our normal operating maps, and so it would likely get routine service, except in extreme circumstances. Next slide, please. So that's, that's the quick once-over for the lease agreement. Uh, next step would be consideration of execution of the lease at the April twelfth city council business meeting. That concludes my presentation. Mr. Mayor, turn it back to you, and I'm available for questions if there are any.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roberts. Council members, do you have any questions for, uh, possibly proposed, uh, for the end? Go ahead.
So on the recommendations just made, I guess, so. Right. Basically, we're donating to.
Council member Campbell. I can't, I can't hear council member Campbell.
Okay, council member, can you speak up just a little bit of the track one more time?
The item that you, you, you hear me now there, Jacob? Okay. You brought up the item on snow removal and the rec- and the recommendation was made, my question in regard into public gift of funds. That is still a service that we would be providing, that there's a cost to it, obviously we're paying. How does that bump up against public gift of funds if we're doing free snow removal for an entity?
Sure, that's a very reasonable question. Uh, the way that works in this situation is we are still the ground owner. And in this case, additionally, that is a shared parking lot with the food bank, and we have, uh, some other different lease agreement with the food bank that requires us to plow the parking lot anyhow. So the reality is to get to the food bank parking lot, which is a shared one with the Boys and Girls Club. We have to go past the front entrance of the Boys and Girls Club anyway. So at the end of the day, it's, it wouldn't be a gift of pub- public funds because we own the ground, and then also because we have an obligation to get further in, so we would have to go through that path anyhow. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we ran that by the attorney.
We ran that by the attorney multiple times. Uh, attorney Lell and I have talked about this at great length.
And I think the recommendation is why, why we, we ran that by, uh, the attorney. All right.
Thank you, council member Campbell. Any other questions for council members? Council member Volter, go ahead.
Um, mine is not so much your question, but I am also, um, in agreement with that staff recommendation. I think that as a business owner of a downtown, I know that it's my, my obligation to go ahead and take care of my own property. So, this is a great deal for them if we are going to go ahead and clear the food bank anyway. I'm going with staff recommendation on that.
Thank you, council member Volter. Right. Any other questions or comments from council members? All right. Mr. Roberts, you have everything you need at this point to proceed?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. Just one thing I wanted to add, I neglected to mention, uh, attorney Lell has gone through this agreement and crossed some Ts and dotted some Is. So there will be some Scrivener-type changes, and the one that the council sees on the twelfth, just as a F Y I, I will also include that in the agenda bill as a reminder.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. All right. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That item is item seven point two, twenty twenty-three strategic priorities and twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven strategic plan with Ms. Nick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It has been a little while since we had a conversation with the city council about the strategic priorities and the strategic plan. If the council remembers, uh, the last time we adopted the strategic priorities was back in, uh, two thousand and nineteen, just before COVID. And we have subsequent then to that, continue to use that plan and, and update it. We haven't changed the priorities. We've just updated the, the five-year plan. We originally identified, uh, with the city council, six priorities that were a part of that original, uh, strategic priorities list, and that included safe and secure, economic development, managed growth, utilities and transportation, community culture and good government. And those strategic priorities came out of the two thousand and fifteen comprehensive plan. We were waiting for a new vision statement in order to come back to the city council and talk about updating then the strategic priorities to align with Imagine Monroe, our new vision statement. And so in looking then at the list, uh, this evening, we are building then our new strategic priorities around Imagine Monroe. And we've identified then six priorities based upon Imagine Monroe. Those are accessible parks and public waterways, supporting local, building community, friendly and responsive, creating connections. Supporting local, building community, friendly and responsive, creating connections and ensuring a safe place. So we go on to the next slide. And so what that looks like then in practice is taking the vision statement itself and dividing up the. The phrases in that vision statement and then identifying the projects that align with each one of those phrasings. And the whole intent here is to talk to the city council this evening to ensure that the projects that we are identifying under each one of these.
Strategic priorities.
Yes?
Keep going.
I'm sorry. The projects that we're identifying under each one of these strategic priorities actually then line up with our long-range vision. So this is the opportunity for us to come back and take a look and say, are the things that are most important to us from a planning and budget perspective. Are those consistent with the new vision statement? So we can start, I think, by getting some feedback from the city council just around, do these new strategic priorities? Does this framework make sense that the city council is? Is this what you're hoping to see as we try and budgets moving forward for the next five and six year period?
So on that broader, are you going to go through each one separately?
I wasn't planning on going through each one of the columns separately. We have a next slide that actually takes each one of these columns and divides it up into the five-year plan. And that's where we get into more grand in detail about kind of the goals and projects that under under each one of these items.
So thoughts from council on how this is broken up using Imagine the Road? So like what you're looking for? All right, Councilmember Ginnipur, does it look good to you?
Yes, sir.
All right, Councilmember Starbrow, I didn't see you shake your head. So could you?
As much of it as I have read so far, yes, it'd be interesting to see the five-year or the. What Ms. Knight referred to is the next slide.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so next up. Again, not easy to see on this. Hopefully, you've got your council packet material. You can zoom in a little bit closer, maybe. I don't know. Kirk Whiteoff, if you can, you can zoom anywhere. I don't think you can in in a slide, can you? I think this is probably as good as you get. Yeah. Nope, nope, nope. So what we did then is we took each one of those strategic priorities. So if you're looking at the first one, which is access to parks and healthy waterways. And then under each one of those, we've identified the projects that we're both currently working on now and projects that we would be. Wanting to work on from a kind of a strategic perspective moving into twenty twenty-seven. You can see then how these projects tend to line up over the next five years. So what's really important is for projects that take an extended number of years in order to complete. This is the opportunity to ensure, for example, the acquisition of Norphil Park is then followed by. Getting a grant for designing construction, which is then, of course, followed by designing and constructing, which is then, you know, followed by completion. So the idea is to ensure that the key projects that we're most interested in are listed in the plan. And that we have constrained that plan, as Ms. Hazard is going to be talking about later, through our capital projects subject and through our general fund budget. So this plan is in alignment with the work that you're going to see Ms. Hazard present to you later on this evening. It also then ensures that we have the right resources in place, not just the financial resources, but also the staffing resources. So when the council members were talking earlier this evening about the tour of the wastewater treatment plant. And the upcoming investment that we're going to need to make into that plant. That plant and those improvements are included on this plan. And you can see them listed here under helping water rates. So that's how we've then created kind of this five-year strategy where we're thinking ahead about what resources do we need? Are we saving money for those resources? Do we need to go out for bonding and so on in order to achieve then the mayor and council long-range goals? This plan then also is used for the mayor as a guideline for developing the mayor's recommended budget. So he has inputs and an opportunity for the council's understanding of what's most important to you. And what you feel is most important to the community. And so we're aligning then the executive branch and the legislative branch together in a budget development process. So not everything that the mayor puts forward in the budget is included in this plan. But we understand what council's priorities are and we're thinking ahead about how to accommodate those priorities. So any questions? I'm happy to go through this in kind of more detail about what's in each one of these items. This is not the last time you're going to see this plan. It will be coming back to you again as part of the mayor's recommended budget. So as we're starting to work on the budget. We will be looking to this plan as a guideline, but also continuing conversations with council about, are there things that you want to accomplish that aren't included? Because now would be a great time to talk about those things before we get started on the budget. So sometime between now and June, for example.
Any questions or comments to councilmembers? All right, staying known.
So the last thing I want to mention just about the plan in in general is. We're going to be discussing with council later on this evening, the biennial budget. And this also provides the framework for that biennial budget. So when you ask yourself, well, how can we be thinking ahead about what might be our expenditures in twenty twenty-four, for example? It's really this document then that becomes the guiding document for putting together a two-year budget. So we know in advance, what are those projects that we're going to need? Now, that being said, Ms. Hazard is going to present the opportunities for coming back and amending the budget as we do now. We do a budget amendment in May every year, you know, to harmonize the beginning and ending fund balances. And we'll do the same if the council decides to move forward with a biennial budget.
Sorry, thank you. I'll start again. I just want to be clear though, I mean, the in the state that you made about this document, the biennial budget being able to support this. We've had strategic plans that have been here on a annual budget. So one is not driving the. You remember to me that's what it would look like if it was biennial?
No, not at all. I'm just saying it's another tool in the toolbox for aligning if we were to be in a biennial budget, what expenditures would be happening in the second year of the annual budget?
Correct. We would have that expenditures in the logic or we would have that forward-looking.
Yes.
That's what I wanted to say.
Yep, absolutely.
Good deal.
So unless council has, you know, specific questions about any of the projects that are aligned under each one of the kind of strategic. Priorities, the way that we've listed them out here, this would be a great opportunity to provide that feedback. But again, if this is your first look at it and you want to absorb it and think more about it, certainly we're happy to bring this back at future study session for more discussion.
Thoughts from councilmembers? Would you like this back to a future study session or? If something changes, right back?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. We're ready to move on to the biennial budget discussion. So the doctor, you have the floor.
Thank you. So basically, what you have in front of you is our. The staff's recommendation is to go to a biennial budget. In order to do that for RCW, it's chapter thirty-five, A thirty-four. If you're interested in reading through all the various steps, believe me, I've done that a few times here over the last month. We have to do it in an odd numbered year or in an even numbered year to start the biennial on an odd number of years. So and you have to adopt the enacted ordinance at least six months prior to the beginning of your fiscal year. So the city of Monroe is on a fiscal year that begins January one. We're on a calendar fiscal year. As you may be aware, the state is actually on a July to June fiscal year, a day to budget on a biennial basis. So if we want to make this move, we do need to adopt the ordinance here before June thirtieth. And you know me, I don't like to do anything last minute. So that's why we want to talk about it tonight. And we would be good then for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. If you adopt and go to a biennial budget, we have a model for everyone. We can try it, try it for a couple of cycles. If the city feels this isn't the right fit for you, you can always revert back to an annual budget again. All you have to do is reverse the enacted ordinance. You do have to do it at the end of the biennium. So it's not like you can change your mind towards the end of twenty-three for twenty-four to be an annual budget. But you can certainly then revert back at the end of twenty-four or at the end of twenty-six. You know, make that assessment after each biennial. One of the things that I did in the agenda packet, and I don't necessarily want to go through each and every one, is I listed based on information provided by municipal research. Some of the pros and cons that have been stated about doing biennial budgets. What I really wanted to talk about tonight is why we feel like it's a good time to start doing a biennial budget. As Ms. Knight alluded to, we're already here at the city doing a lot of our strategic planning on long-term. Looks, you know, we've just gotten talking about the long-term, the five-year strategic plan. We adopt our capital facilities plan through the comprehensive plan of twenty years, but we also do the six-year as part of the budget process every year. We're doing a rate model for the three utilities on a six-year horizon. You mentioned the wastewater treatment plant tour earlier. There's some big capital involved with that over the next six years. And that model addresses that capital and the funding needs for that. So the model pretty much is already doing a six-year budget, quite frankly. And every year as part of the budget process, we do project the general fund out over a six-year horizon as well. We don't do it down to the granular level that we would do on a biennial basis. But we're already thinking long-term. So since we already have that discipline and the staff here at the city, especially the directors. They've got to be some of the best directors I've ever worked with when it comes to budget discipline. They're pretty good about paying attention to how much they're spending throughout the year. They don't go palm wild at the beginning of the year. And spend everything in the first three or four months and then have nothing left for the end of the year. That I don't see them spending everything in the first year and having nothing left in the second year. They're good about knowing what their needs are and timing accordingly. Having said that, we also have processes in place that. Ensures the council, since you are ultimately responsible for the finances of the city, have say all the way through. Again, Ms. Knight referenced the budget amendment that we traditionally do around the May time period to true-up beginning fund balances. With a biennial budget, RCW actually dictates that you cannot start doing a formal modification until after the eighth month of the year. So the attached recommended calendar that is part of this agenda bill does reflect that. However, we already have a practice here that if there's some unanticipated opportunities that come up. Even before we do a formal amendment, we bring those to council. And part of the finance or the fiscal statement in those agenda bills is to mention that this is not currently budgeted. However, we have funds either from here, here, grant, or, you know, bending fund balances, starting to show that it's coming in stronger than anticipated. Will we still tell you how that's going to get funded? And part of the recommendation then is if you approve it, you're giving us the okay to include it when we get to the formal budget amendment. So council still has control whether you're adopting the budget on an annual or a biennial basis. We also give you finance reports on a monthly basis through the council packet. That requires quarterly. We give it to you much more frequently than that. That is not going to change. So council will still have say over what's going on with the budget, whether you're doing it annually or biannually. We do believe though that by doing it biannually, it actually takes a lot of pressure off the departments. We're in a cycle where it seems like as soon as we're done doing the budget, we get the budget adopted. At least here in Monroe, we we did the last couple of years, we've been adopting in November. So we do get a little bit of breathing room. Before the start of the year, then the start of the year, we're doing the annual report. And then as soon as annual report is done, we do that first budget amendment and then we're right back into budget. So it seems like there's no real break. The theory with the biennial budget is that we do get a break in that second year. We get the modifications done as part of that first budget amendment come August, September. So that we're ready to go for the second year and then ideally everything runs pretty smooth. We can still do another true-up if we needed to for beginning fund balances. You still have to adopt a six-year CIP on an annual basis. You still have to adopt your property taxes on an annual basis. And you'll still get your reports on a monthly basis to even though then, you know, are we still comfortable not taking our one percent for property taxes? That is a conversation that will still happen. I admit to a certain bias, but I, you know, even though that there are the perceived disadvantages that MRSC has heard from other organizations. I do hear from my peers, more and more cities are going to a biennial budget. We're kind of a little late to the table with that one. And I personally am looking forward to it and certainly hope that. Council would be willing to give it a try. I think we've got the right people in place to make it go. Admittedly, for the first one, there's always going to be a little bit more work, that first cycle. But I think once we get the processes in place. Like everything else, it should run smooth. With that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Thank you. I was having a first time. So I appreciate that. I mean, the one comment, we're actually not like the game. Good move ninety-one and two. Go biennial and then move back to the annual correct. What I would recommend.
I have, I could not tell you the date specifically, but it sounds like it's been tried once.
It's listed on the site. It's listed on the site. You said major issue.
Okay. The the challenge that I gave to the person who told me that was you gave up after just only one cycle.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I, I'm not a fan of biennial. I carry that quite a bit of this. I guess my biggest, I've got a lot of notes on this and thought that I've had. I think one of the biggest things is from the standpoint of as a, I'm always looking at, okay, is this going to make us. To your point, is this going to make us better? Is there something we're trying to fix? Is there a deficiency in what we are doing as a as a city from a financial perspective that would say, hey, we need to make change? The change on that side of the equation. I I don't see that. I mean, that's the piece that I look at and I look at myself, well, hey. Which will make it to the major plan better. Projects like yours will aren't, you know, that will help us. But we've got a ton of examples over the last ten years on annual budget. A cycle that we have been doing, that we've been accomplishing a ton of projects, large dollar projects. That we've worked on collectively across, you know, across the board to get that across the finish line. I, you know, I read the, you know, the concept of proceed is not proceed loss of control. It is a loss of control from the. From the governing body, from the from the city council on that. So I could, then one of the items you addressed that I would bring up is the heat pump. And not being able to, you know, discuss the, you know, that you made the comment on no real rate from the budget. And I totally get that. I like that, to be honest with you, as a, you know, we've been extremely successful as a financial. I'm on a biennial side. I think because we spent a lot of time and because we have outstanding leader right away, which I've said over and over again. And we're usually not at odds with strategic things, but this is just something. Spending twenty-five years in budgets, whether it's the credit union or in private industry and then here is the, you know, the public interest. That annual structure and operating cadence and rhythm. To me is extremely important to have. And we're going to. How, how many variables right now? The reason why we look at the comments that they put on the site. But we moved back and actually makes a lot of sense with so much growth in Monroe. And I want to do, you know, here, it's with fact, like we have data. Which is one of the items that puts the aggregate of those back of those concerns on why you wouldn't want to build it because it does make it more difficult. And if I look at where we're at in the twenty twenty-two and the state of the world and everything that's going on, I'm concerned, you know, about about that. That is something we have right now. That's a, that's a real thing. But I'm also one that says, hey, you know, prove it to me. Data has some feeling. Um, but I'm also one that says, hey, you know, prove it to me. Beta has some feelings. Pipe up, you know that. So from that standpoint, like, hey, okay, if that, if this is something that you, that that you feel so strongly about, and I respect you immensely, um, what I would want to see to make me change my mind, because I know that this works. We have ten years, at least from my experience, that it works. I want to see, hey, what, what performance, financial performance for biannual of budget cities versus annual budget cities. I mean by that, what their, uh, you know, how their audit grades, you know, what are they, what are their reserves? You know, all the different things that we can point to as a city of Monroe, to say, you know what, we got to drive. But one of the two things that have operated through the great pause, great recession, all these different things in a very sound financial, you know, uh, state. I would want to see us against all these other cities that are saying, hey, this is a great idea. You know, Seattle's doing it. I'm gonna do it. But I think why not, I'd say that they're in it, but that's, that's, that's where I'm looking at. And the reality of the situation is, is you're right, we absolutely have outstanding directors. We don't, we don't have it, but that stuff changes. One of the reasons in here, like, you know, when I read through all of the, you know, the different reasons why people go back or whatever, is that you have a new city manager, you have a new finance director, uh, you have new, whatever the case may be, that in and out, um, you lose the flexibility here in a year. You do lose flexibility and prioritization. People in there, they just, it creates a more cumbersome process, to my opinion. So that's what makes you, all of it, all of it.
Thank you, Councilmember Gamble. Ms. Knight?
I was fortunate enough to be able to work for the city of Standwood, which had a two-year budget. And I think that it's left about losing control over the budget process, because you still have scheduled amendments. What happens though is, is that the amount of staff time and energy that goes into creating a new budget every year, when you don't have that in the two-year budget, what it allows you to do then is to take a deeper dive into some, excuse me, some bigger projects that otherwise can't get done, because you don't have the resources, because those resources are dedicated to the budget. So you still come back and do budget amendments. So in Standwood, for example, the year when we had a, a new plot come in, we just adjusted in the budget amendments, the number of plots that we thought in single-family residential homes we were gonna have, we just changed the revenue projection, and we did that during the budget amendment. So you don't leave the same level of effort in order to get to the outcome. That's what I find beneficial in the two-year budget. You don't lose control. It's just that the effort that goes into creating a fresh budget every year instead goes into creating those budget amendments, which are much quicker and shorter. And it frees you up to do the bigger, longer ones things that you can't normally get done.
Um, Ms. Hasser, thank you, Councilmember Gamble.
Yeah, and, and I've been, and thinking, Ms. Knight, I was gonna kind of go there too, and part of it is, you know, and, and it's fair to ask about the matrices, however, I don't see that that would necessarily change one way or the other, whether you're doing an annual or a biannual budget. I do agree with you, it depends on the personnel that you have in place. Um, me doing a biannual budget and still have great audits, you can still have, um, fully reserve, you know, funded reserves. I would almost counter that the fact that, and most of these cities, I know who, I know my peers there, and they're fantastic people too. We call each other all the time, you know, hey, how are you handling this? They have more time in those off-years to address their audit issues and their internal controls. Quite frankly, in the five years that I've been here, and Deborah has been on me, and now that we have Mr. Highland on board, I'm not in here as much on the weekends, but I was showing myself to be able to keep up with all this budgeting and then still doing all the rest of the stuff, so that we can get into the deeper dive like Ms. Knight was talking about. So it's not that I expect, so we're not fixing a problem so much as we're trying to redirect resources, if that makes sense. The other counter that I would make as well is, is you're right, the, the, maybe the flexibility is lost a little bit, not the control, but the flexibility. But I would almost challenge you and say that that may be a good thing, because I have seen in cities where where you start having turnover in the leadership positions, on the county council, even if the mayor's position, having a two-year budget and a culture of that tends to help keep you on track for the strategic priorities versus sometimes having almost whiplash, because things can change so frequently here to here. I know I got frustrated in a city that's gonna remain nameless, and I didn't really stay there that long. Part of the reason was this, is that one year they're committing to one strategic priority, they budget accordingly, the next year it all went out the window, and everything you spent trying to get there for the first time ended up being wasted resources. So a two-year budget can help you, and again, this is just my own opinion, but in my opinion, a two-year budget can help you stay a course a little bit better, especially if you end up having this overstepping and people start leaving. There's already a road path that they can walk into that helps them with their transition, if that makes sense. Um, at the end of the day, it really is about preference and what the council is comfortable with. Uh, the reality is, you have a staff on board here beyond just the, the administrator, the executive and the finance department that I get to manage it, whether it's biannual or annual. Um, it's just really getting down to, it's not that we're fixing a problem, it's that we're trying to redirect resources in the second year.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. I'm sorry, hitting Ms. Hasser. Councilmember Gamble.
I'm flattered by that. Thank you.
Uh, no, I just, well, I just, there's a couple things to respond, you know, to their bold comments and the other, I mean, the bottom line is that we get back on this, there is a loss of, from a council perspective, like I did from, from a city perspective, there's, I mean, you said it, there's a desire to go that way, it's, there's easing. It, it makes it easier, there's less, uh, I have a tragedy here, that's, I get all of that. My, my point is, is from the council perspective, from the council perspective, and somebody that has overspent budget on a regular basis, that there is a advantage to having that level of attention on a yearly basis. Um, and, you know, some of the stuff that you brought up, uh, whiplash and stuff, I mean, we haven't had that. I mean, I would also argue further is why we couldn't, we were here so long is because we took so long to get in, um, you know, city heard stuff figured out as well, and you're doing way too many jobs.
Oh, the fourth.
Yeah, way too many jobs at one time. Um, but, uh, that, you know, the concept of losing, the flexibility lost, that, that's a real thing, and, you know, that is a component from me. Um, you know, this side, that I have been finance chair for the last eight years, I think, you know, I just, I, I got some data that says that that's a better way of doing it. That's really, because you made a comment that it's hundred percent, it's the leadership that is the most important piece. I agree with you on that, whether you're in a biannual or an annual, uh, you know, budget, so I would, I one hundred percent concede to that. Um, but with the leadership that we have in place now, and the directors that we have, been able to perform and not experience any of the, you know, some of the downsides that should draw out, other than, yeah, she's gonna be a budget game every year. And for me, that's intentional, and that's exactly how we should be, and we shouldn't be a year off. And we still do have strategic discussions. We still have a lot of strategics on, uh, on the budget process on a regular basis. So I, we're not gonna probably agree, so that's why, uh, well, I know we won't, but that's why I'm saying, hey, show me some data that would change my mind, and I don't see anything in my reading, the, the back of stuff that says, hey, there's something here that contains your opinion around the downside and the reason why Monroe went back because of, hey, we experienced it, and we're in it right now, have been for the last ten years with all of the different big swings and economic conditions that made it kind of difficult, so I'll be there.
Thank you, Councilmember Gamble. Um, are there any other questions from council members or thoughts on biannual budget? Go ahead, Councilmember Fulcher.
So, um, I feel like the second grader in the room with the two seniors, and so I, I really don't have a whole lot to add here, because you guys just clouded me with everything. Um, what is our next step? I feel this whole idea, we're two of us on the screen, and only four of us are here, it feels disconnected, but um, what is our next move in this discussion?
Ms. Hasser.
So what we were hoping for tonight was a robust discussion among council, because really is your call. Um, and depending on where the council felt or where the consensus was, if, if council was willing to move forward, um, I have actually already written the ordinance ready to go for next week, for first week. If the consensus of the, of the council is no stay the course, then we'll just yank that out of our compass and stay the course. So what we were hoping for tonight, though, is that robust discussion about are we willing to go there or not? I mean, and, 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 and Mr. Gamble will tell you, we've had these discussions after a finance committee.
Yes, oh, you know, and, and I would imagine it would have been fun to be on a debate team against him.
Um, you know, I, you know, I, you know, I was told we've tried this before. Like I said, I didn't know the exact date, you know, so thank you for that. I have to admit, there's a part of me that's like, okay, that was twenty years ago, though. Um, you know, so is it time to maybe try it again? I don't know. Um, again, that is where we need some direction from you guys, and that's what we're really hoping for tonight.
Right, so before, um, I am not a fan of, that's the way we've always done it, being insistent to not change. Um, I am also a fan of using our resources, and one of our resources is the people on our staff. And I do understand Ms. Knight's point about, there is, um, a lot of redundancy that happens on a yearly basis, which more things could be getting to that, I get that. Um, I personally am open to the idea of the biannual budget, so um, I would be interested in hearing, these two have to say, but, um, I'm, I'm certainly looking at it as a step forward, which can benefit staff. If we are only saying that it's benefiting the council, if that's the thing that's holding us back, is that we want to build range on stuff, it is, it is our budget stuff. And we know that it's the best budget, but we say yes to it. When people say, what do you do on council? I say, budget ordinance, we know this. So I'm, I'm a fan of moving forward.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Fisher, sorry, I was doing additional side here.
Um, so that was quite an educational experience, so let's just, you know, and just make notes for, how are you long in one year today? And I completely get the, the uncomfortableness, uh, that coming over Gamble was talking about of us giving up some of that control and it not feeling very good. But that being said, I have a ton of confidence in our system. So, uh, that it's, my short term here, it comes both, and there's several things that I've been involved in in years, that the city have always been impressed. And we're always very professional and very on top of everything. Um, so I personally feel okay with, um, giving that long leash. And if it's something that you guys really need and would make things better and easier and more proficient at what you do, then that's something that I would I'm gonna continue to preach about it, meditating myself, um, but you guys, I've never shown any irresponsibility with not only the budget, but everything, and it's me. So, um, having that conflict in the city's and just like many things, I regret it.
Thank you, Councilmember Fisher. Uh, Councilmember Davis, go ahead.
Yeah, let me build it in just a second, uh. Um, and when you, when you started, I, I knew right where you were going from the beginning. And I, and I understand that, and I understand your perspective too, that's really a totally unique program down here. Um, my thinking is, is what you said, with data, uh, I've got a lot of confidence. Your leadership, the department is that it's there. And I've been in this position for eleven years, and I've had some experience with how people handle that time. I'm not an expert in this field, so I defer to the experts in everything. I know you, you have a lot of knowledge in this field, so I, I really do, when you have anything on your knowledge, you know, can I truly need to share with you. Um, but I also understand where you're coming from. What I'm thinking is, what you said when you started out, is it's not something that you're locked into. It's something we could try. And if it doesn't work out, or if we're not happy with it, or we're comfortable with it, we can go back. And I think that's, that's where I'm looking at it right now, if, if we do that. Because we, maybe we should give this a, a try, at least test the waters to see how it goes. Meet some of those goals that you're looking for. Like ideas that you're thinking. Then that's very, if it's not working, I'll take it easy, we'll go right now. And that's, that's how I'm gonna get it right. A little bit of a mission, but I do, your concerns, but I also think this is gonna be an opportunity to at least test it and see how it goes.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Gander?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I appreciate everyone's opinions and input, uh, tonight. Just a question for clarification, Ms. Hasser, so if we go down this path and we establish a two-year budget and COVID twenty happens, and we need to make drastic changes in our budget, heaven forbid, uh, you're saying that the council, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding would be if that were to happen, council would not be in control of making any of those changes on the budget. That would strictly be the, the mayor and the administrator. Uh, not, not the budget, I should say, the spending during that year or two years where we as a council are locked in to our two-year budget. Is that correct?
That is actually not correct. Um, just like with the annual budget, and when COVID did occur in two thousand twenty, um, council has the authority to ask the mayor to detail spending right away, and then we would bring you the budget amendment to adopt. Um, just like you can do an emergency ordinance to give mayor additional spending authority before you have a budget amendment, if the circumstances were the other way around. Um, so you still have budget amendments, it's just that in the first year, the first modification doesn't happen until eight months in. Um, so whether it was an annual budget, I mean, just like in COVID, the mayor had everybody stop spending, we didn't get the actual amendment done until August in twenty twenty, but council had finally say on where that amendment was. A biannual budget's no different, it's just that you wouldn't start it until August within that first year. So for two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four budget, that modification begins in August. And that's reflected in the calendar that is attached with this agenda package.
Great. Thank you, that.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that, that totally helps alleviate my, my concern there. Um, I, I appreciate Councilwoman Gamble, I appreciate your concerns, um, and I can see those. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna, uh, agree with staff and go with staff's recommendation at this point. Uh, I, I say we give it a go and see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gander. Uh, Councilmember Scarborough, like to hear your thoughts on it. Councilmember Scarborough, can you hear us?
My computer went away for a while and just came back.
Correct. Um, do you feel, do you feel prepared to offer some comments on the, for people to go to a biannual budget?
Uh, the only thing I would spin The only thing I would spin, Councilman Gamp said, and told more Felser or Councilman Davis, but I did hear what Councilman Hanford said. And I'm inclined to believe that I'm with the staff and with Ms. Hasser in giving this two-year thing a try. If I'm wrong because I haven't heard enough, I'd be glad to sit down with Ms. Hasser and have a better input. I'm sorry that it's Councilman. Out again for, yeah, I was just kicked out again for about 20 seconds. So do you need anything else from me?
What I'm understanding, Councilmember Scarborough, is you were supportive of the proposal to go to a biannual budget at this time.
Yes.
Thank you. Did you have anything else?
No.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell.
Yeah, I just appreciate everyone's comments. The, I just want to make sure you made that statement that, hey, not that we can always end. That's not by any stretch of the imagination at all, not in my type of way. In fact, there's a lot of things we have done to change our policy, which is who would be against that minus if. The other piece of that is the other thing that we all must remember, in my opinion, is that we don't make policy based on current staff. I don't disagree. We have awesome staff, right? But if we don't make policy based off of current staff, we base policy in their decision into the future, we're constituents, we're the governing body. So that's, I just want to make sure that we, everybody, prevent a snap because, you know, like you could go to a Cooper football game and somebody threw some terrible error, and then we wouldn't have our luxurious finance director. I get it. So anyway, that's, you know, that's, at the end of the day, I'm going to, you know, people work hard either way, but. Read your line of thinking. I don't think it's best interest without the additional data points and challenges. Much of I trust is actually across the board. I'd love to see what sort of the data points are for some of the cities, you know, to leadership. So biannual versus annual. And then the other question, one follow-up is, have they addressed the fine or software due for biannual budgets? And, okay, so we, when did that?
So one of the last bullet points that I had in the agenda bill is we reached out to one of the cities like Horse Park specifically that I know does both a biannual budget and is on Springbrook software system. And they told us, yes, that the Springbrook software system does support a biannual budget. They're choosing not to use it. They just put the numbers in there every year because they have the time to do it, is what she said. So, but the system does support a biannual budget. So it's not like we would need a new software system from that aspect.
Thank you. So Ms. Hasser, just one of the points that Councilmember Campbell brought up was just about staff handling to implement something like this. If the council chooses ultimately to go to a biannual budget and at some point you're going to retire, well, is there enough talent out there with finance directors to be able to come in and understand how to do a biannual budget?
Yes. Yes. Again, in the, I included the list that was found on MRSC's site as to what cities are currently doing a biannual budget. Our new finance manager, who, you know, I'm also mentoring, came from a city that did a biannual budget. So it is a somewhat common item out there. In fact, if I were to try and recruit some of these folks to come here, one in particular, I'll be honest with you, I did try to recruit before we went out there the second time. And that was one of the first things they asked me, are you guys on a biannual budget yet? Because it is a favor to staff just for that reason, once it's established. I mean, I'm listening to this and quite frankly, I'm thinking, man, I'm taking on a lot of stress here for the first go-round because if it fails, you know, I expect every single one of me to go, uh huh, I told you so. You know, so there's going to be a lot of pressure on me to make sure the first one goes pretty, you know, the first two years, second goes pretty smooth. But I also believe, you know, I know that anytime you start a new process, it's going to take a little bit more effort than what the ideals could be. But once that process gets into place, staff that has done two-year budgets, everyone, and full disclosure, I have not done a two-year budget myself. But the reason I'm excited about one is that every time I talk to my peers who come from a city that does them, they tell me there's no other way to go, you know, and they tell me why. And so from a staff perspective, it is a favorite, a tool to have because it does give you that time to pursue and do that deep dive, to use Ms. Knight's words, on other projects in that off-year, so.
And then to the point that was raised about being able to make changes in the, within the two years, you mean the statements, if I heard you correctly, that when the ordinance is adopted, that nothing can be changed for the first eight months of the first year of the biannual. Is that's not the same as sort of a biannual budget, right?
That is correct. However, we currently, and you can certainly do it with a biannual budget, when there are opportunities that come up, we bring those to council even before, you know, we've had a couple already this year, and I'm sorry I didn't bring examples of them, where staff has come and said, you know, we have this opportunity. In fact, there's one that will be coming next week for a grant the police department was able to secure that was not considered during the budget. You know, they'll let you know this is outside of the budget. However, if council okay's this, then that goes in my file and it will be included in the formal budget amendment, which isn't currently scheduled till May.
So in the first eight months, if something came up because appropriation authority is there, you can still use the appropriation authority if the council gives, not just with the understanding or reliance. The council's approved an amendment in August.
Right.
Okay. All right. And at the end, so the risk, and again, not thinking about myself, but a future mayor and a future council, is that a mayor could overexpend a budget in the first eight months without council setting again in pertaining expenditures.
That is a risk, but you also have that risk now on an annual budget. Because until, you know, a mayor could come in and overexpend in the first six months and direct staff not to bring an amendment. You know, so it's a same risk.
So any other comments or questions for councilmembers? All right. So it sounds like you have to go ahead and bring forward those requirements to the meeting on schedule.
I look forward to the debating next week.
Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate everybody's talk. The next segment we have then is CIP funding discussion. It's by Minnesota Campus. Again, with this topic. Go ahead.
So switching gears, we went from a three-year budget. We're going to now go to a six-year planning strategy, I guess, would be a way to put it. Ms. Whitehead, if I may, may I go ahead and share my statement? Well, she's here, so I can forget that you know. Okay. So what we're going to talk about tonight, and forgive me, please, some of you have seen this already, either through the committee or came in one-on-one, is strategies on how we can fund our six-year capital facilities plan. Within the agenda bill itself, we talk about all the various revenues that are potentially available to the city to help pay for capital. I'm certainly available to ask questions if you have any questions on any of the specific revenues that were listed, but I thought I could save some time tonight to go over that part. Because again, I think almost everybody here has heard that. So and certainly reach out to me afterwards if you want to go into it a little bit more. The one revenue I think I do want to highlight and talk about a little bit more, though, is real estate excise taxes. A lot of times you've heard me talk about first quarter and second quarter percent rate. And what that refers to is that every time there is a change in ownership of property within the state of Washington. So if I own a house, I put it up for sale, there is a real estate excise tax that is collected at the point of sale from the seller. The state collects a portion. It's states is like 1.2% or something like that. Please don't quote me on that exact amount. The county gets a certain portion. And then cities can choose to collect a quarter percent of the sales price for real estate excise taxes. If you are a city over 5,000 in population, you can enact that sales tax. And if you are a GMA required to, or if you're required to plan in your GMA, you can also enact a second quarter percent real estate excise tax to collect. We collect both because we are a GMA planning city and we are over 5,000 in population. So somewhere in our history, we enacted to take that second quarter percent on the sale of property. Now, the reason that we made a distinction between the first and second quarter percent is that RCW restricts how that money may be spent. It has to be spent on what they call capital public works projects. RCW defines what that is. And so the projects have to be listed and identified in your capital facilities plan. And the first quarter percent has a little bit more flexibility than the second quarter percent. So for example, and it's highlighted in the agenda packet, your first quarter percent can be used for those public works projects of a local government for planning and acquisition, construction, reconstruction, repair, et cetera, streets, roads, highways, parks, administrative facilities, fire protection facilities, trails, libraries, judicial facility, et cetera. Second quarter percent, if you're reading it real quick, looks like it's the same thing except that there are some keywords missing. You cannot use the second quarter percent rate for the planning and acquisition of these projects like you could on first quarter percent. So for example, when we purchased the Northville Park, we could use first quarter percent real estate excise tax to acquire our land. But you cannot use second quarter percent for that. You can use both to develop your park land, but only the first quarter percent by park land. So that's an important distinction to remember. You can also use first quarter percent for administrative facilities, i.e. a city hall, a police station, a court. But you cannot use second quarter percent to do that. Those facilities are left out of the definition for second quarter percent rate. So I wanted to make sure we all understood that distinction between the two quarter percents. Mr. Mayor, were there any questions on that?
Any questions, please? Any questions, Kevin or Councilmember Hanford or Councilmember Scarborough?
Through a number of spreadsheets, they are in a.
No questions.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I've printed out copies for those of you that are here on site so that it could hopefully be a little bit easier to see. In the upper corner of each one, I have numbered them exhibits one through seven.
Ms. Hasser, can this stop you for a second? Councilmember Hanford? Okay, please continue.
A little bit, then her voice was breaking up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Hanford.
So this spreadsheet that I'm carrying here is, we've been talking about municipal campus and what we've been told in phase two of the campus. Phase one is the public works building and the emergency coordinating center that has already been built on our campus. We have a portion of that, most of that bond is revenue-based bonds paid for by the utilities. But there is a portion of that building that is used by street operations and by parks. That portion contributed to be 36% back when that bond was first issued. So 36% of the annual debt service is paid for with first quarter rate right now. And we budget that every year as part of the budget. And on this spreadsheet, we see that here laid out the portion of the public works MCC shop that's already committed of about $138,000 a year. So that we already know we're taking off the top of first quarter percent. And I'll show you how this works. Really, the spoiler alert is that we're going to show you that we are going to be able to, with today's numbers and estimates, and I want to stress, these are all estimates. So these numbers are still draft until we go through design. But we're going to make the case that we can go ahead and do what's called a councilmatic bond to be able to do phase two of the municipal campus, which means we would be able to issue a bond for $16.5 million and pay for it out of existing revenues. So no new taxes to be able to do this. And to be able to do this without adversely affecting our ability to pay for our six-year capital facilities plan. So that's the spoiler alert for tonight. So with that, one of the things is we were looking at how much real estate excise tax we have been collecting every year. Last year, we collected, and I'm going to jump ahead here a little bit with my second spreadsheet. So it would be exhibit two, for those of you with the paper. Last year for, put that out of the way. Sorry, exhibit three. Last year, we collected in first quarter rate, 862, over $862,000. Okay. So really double that for total city collection. But for what can be used for the municipal campus, we collected 862. We had budgeted $450,000 to be conservative. We have been, as you can see over the last few years, easily exceeding $550,000. So that's what we budgeted for 2022. And as you can see on this spreadsheet, the first three months have come in well over that. We came in almost 71.5% above what our budgeted expectation was for January, 47%. And then you see almost 86% here with March's receipts. So the housing market here in Monroe has remained strong. We, just like sales tax was on a two-year lag, or a month lag, sorry. So really, this does not include any potential sales in our newest, next area, Monroe Woodlands. So once Monroe Woodlands comes on board, we should see a nice little bump in our real estate excise tax. The reason that I mentioned this is that we want to, when we were doing the projections to figure out if we could pay for the municipal campus, to remain conservative, we're sticking with $550,000 a year. And that's the number that we want to use that we plug into the six-year projections. So going back to that first spreadsheet, so exhibit one for you guys, you can see here that we talk about $550,000 in rate each year, minus the first $138,000. So keep that in the back of your head. Mr. Roberts has been working with our design team, and they did the adjacency study, which was presented to council here a few weeks back. And they've done a rough estimate on how much they think now given cost to do phase two, which is this side up to where the break is between this building and the police station. And they're estimating around $11.2 million. There's also sales tax involved. And then we added contingency, the contingency of about 20%, which is pretty standard for public works contracts. This is also supposed to include fixtures, furniture, equipment, everything to make it a go. You know, it's turnkey, we can walk in. What we also did, though, is we added an additional $2 million to that estimate for project management. Because we have, you know, we're still pretty tight on staffing here. We want to make sure we're going to spend this kind of money. We want to do it right. And as everybody has been reading, you know, we just don't know what bids are going to be. you know, we just don't know what bids are going to be between now and when design will be complete. And if we can move forward with this, our hope is that then we get design done this year so that we're going to bid here at the end of this year, very, very early next year, so that we can break down early spring, or break round early spring next year, which means that's when we would be looking at selling the bond. So we're targeting about $16.5 million in a bond. If we did it over a 40-year period, based on interest rates where they've been over the last, you know, six months, and expecting the Federal Reserve to continue to raise rates a couple more times over the year. My bond underwriter actually gave me and anticipated what our interest rates would be. We added 100 basis points, just to be on the safe side. A steady debt service over 40 years, we're looking at somewhere around $790,000 a year. So that's what you see over here from the councilmatic bond. Now, what's nice about the building, and again, it gets back to accounting principles for those of you who have sat through my budget one-on-one with me, is that because we would be consolidating operations into phase two, which means public works, means the utilities. Mr. Roberts figured out with the adjacency study what's fair footage would be attributed to the three utilities versus what would be general government. And the utility then would need to pay their fair share of this debt service every year. And so that's what this breakdown is, is about 385,000 would be attributed to general government. So that's where we would use REIT one for that amount. And then the rest of it, we split evenly among them for utilities. So that that would cover our bond needs every year. So again, back to that $550,000 for REIT. We already have $138,000 committed. If we now begin to commit this 385,000, we're still within that $550,000 bucket that we have. We still have REIT two to help with park development with streets. And the capital that's attributed to our utilities, that's covered by rates, and we'll talk about that here in a moment. Now, one of the things that I didn't want to do is forget about phase three, what we're calling phase three of municipal campus, and that's the police building. With that, if you remember when we presented the adjacency study, that is again, we hopefully go, if we're doing phase two, 2003, 2004, then the hope is that 2004, 2005, we start doing the police station. If the, we are hoping that with that timeline, we're going to be able to secure some legislative provisos. Maybe there are some grants out there to be able to put the money together to be able to pay for that phase three. But if not, worst-case scenario is we would have to go to the voters and ask for a bond. We're anticipating currently about $6 million. And if that's the case, voted bond, we would recommend a 30-year time period. Current numbers, again, being conservative, we're looking at about $360,000 a year in debt or a little over 10 cents per thousand for a home. For a half a million dollar home, you're looking at just under $51 a year or $4 a quarter per month if that is a voted bond. So again, we're not forgetting about the police department. That is also on the horizon. It was listed in the strategic plan that this night presented earlier. So we are already thinking about how to pay for that as well. So that's what those numbers are at the bottom half of your page. Mr. Mayor, I can pause here if there's any questions on this.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Huster? Councilmember Fisher?
What would it look like to add the campus phase three into the new public bond?
At least $360,000 more per year. And that would all have to be REIT one. So right now, I'm just under, I just have about $27,000 left in REIT one. I mean, we could, we cannot use REIT two to pay for a police station. So we would have to find that $360,000 elsewhere. And quite frankly, it would have to come from the general fund. We do have base capacity, but the base capacity is not quite that. It's around $300,000 right now with property taxes. But you would still have to raise property taxes to do it.
So you look into it, what would it be like to buy and make it essentially $22.5 million?
Correct. Yep. And that brings up a good point, too, is we go through design. And if at the end of design, phase two comes in higher than $16.5 million, we're going to have to talk about this again and see if we can really do it. You know, if there is that tipping point where we just can't afford it, so.
Do we have a tipping point? Like, do we have a forecasted number where it'd be, like, if it did come back high at like $20 million, that would be about immediately? Or, I mean, do we have a number?
Right now, it's $16.5 million.
That's our max?
At this point, yes. $27,000 left in that real estate excise tax that first quarter doesn't buy you a lot of debt service at this point.
Any other questions from Councilmembers?
So one of the things that is not included in this list is the cost to do the design. So the design fees are a little, almost $1.7 million. The recommendation is to pay cash for that. And we do have the cash and we will have the cash to be able to do that. So what you're looking at here is the spreadsheet that shows, oops, it didn't switch. So we created fund 330 two budgets ago to start sweeping money from first quarter REIT to help pay for things like the municipal campus. With 2022's budget, we had anticipated we would end the year with about $929,000. The North Hill Park, when we acquired that land, we had transferred $1 million to real estate excise taxes first quarter to help pay for that. Since then, the Parks Department, Parks Director Mike Farrell, was able to secure a retroactive RCO grant to pay back $1 million of that purchase cost to REIT one. We are going to recommend, when we do the budget amendment, is to transfer that REIT one into this fund so that we can pay for the design of municipal campus with cash. So again, not having to finance the design as part of the bond. Doing that and then continuing to do the sweep of anything we receive above what we budget each year, will start to build the fund balance in this 330 fund. And our recommendation is going to be, we want to have a minimum of two, maybe three years' worth of debt service in this fund. So that if for some reason we go through like a great recession again, like we did back in 2008, 2009, that would give us a couple of years to assess and react and come up with how do we make these payments if our REIT all of a sudden takes a major nose dive. I am comfortable that 550 is a comfortable floor for the real estate excise taxes, because again, when we look back at our history, I think our lowest point was about 360, and that was back during the Great Recession. Everything that I'm reading out there, we talked about this in the Finance Committee. Everything we've been reading is that, yes, people are expecting the housing market to slow down. But what they are not expecting is for prices, prices to go backwards. Prices should still stay, they may not rise as fast as they have been doing, but we still have a major supply and demand issue here on the coast, on the West Coast. So we feel comfortable with that 550 for a while. Any questions at this point?
Questions?
So that takes care of municipal campus. How does that play for utilities? So again, in your package, exhibit four one is, for those of you who may be new on council, this is the six-year model that we do every year, part of the budget process. We project out the utilities over a six-year period. We incorporate all existing debt, debt service they have now, as well as the capital that is, that's adopted by council. So the capital that feeds into this spreadsheet for water is directly off of the six-year capital plan. What I did here, and it would be your spreadsheet four dash four, is I put in on the spreadsheet here in yellow the debt service that would be associated, or the water portion of debt service you see here, the sewer portion of debt service, stormwater as well. So that we can show you here, all the calculations in our model here shows that even with this new debt service for utility, all the capital is still paid for and our debt service coverage still remains well above what our policy sets needs to be. So our policy as elected by council said that we're supposed to have enough cash after all our operations and capital paid to be able to cover the debt service for that year at least one important times. And as you can see here, we well exceed that. I think the lowest year here that you're looking at is almost three times. Bond rating agencies love that, that that number is high. That's water, sewer, we talked about the wastewater treatment plant. The line here that includes debt service includes the municipal campus. The line here, as you can see, here's the big jump over the next couple of years for that wastewater treatment plant for capital. And yet, our plans, as we have them laid out for the sewer, we still can pay for all that capital, include this new bond, and our debt service coverages are still above what our policy requires. And the other bonus with sewer is we're still not recommending any rating increases over the next years. And that is the largest portion of our utility, though. So again, we can take on this debt without having to adjust rates. And that's true of all three. I mean, water and storm already have a rate adjustment associated. We don't have to change that or increase that to accommodate this debt. And again, just to prove it out here, stormwater, same thing. It includes the municipal campus debt. And again, all the capital is paid for, all the operations are paid for, and our debt coverage still remains above what our target is. So that takes care of the biggest capital that we have out there, which is the utilities. Let's talk about parks next. And that's going to be your exhibit five. And I'll explain the color coding here. So again, all these park projects come directly off the six-year CIP that council adopted last November. Zoom out of the way here. So you can see here, we've got Riverfront Master Plan, Catman, North Hill Park alignment development, et cetera. We talked earlier about, in the agenda bill, it talks about where various restricted revenues are. One of the things, we receive gas taxes from the state on a per capita basis. And RCW says that we are supposed to reserve with 14% of that for trails. So the trails, planning and repair line, I did appear on the CIP I highlighted in yellow, because right now, we have around $38,000 in reserve money from those gas taxes. So if we use that money for the $30,000 that's scheduled for 2023, I highlighted that in yellow, we don't expect to spend another $30,000 again until 2026. We'll have some growth again every year. We get about $1600, $1700 a year in that money. So our recommendation is come 2026, we use what's left and then make a transfer from the general fund for the rest of the $30,000 that's needed. $16,600 from the general fund is not really material about. So the general fund can afford to do that. The other items here, you'll see, we talk about real estate excise tax second quarter percent. Again, if I'm projecting $550,000 in the first quarter percent, we figured the same amount, because it's the same sale. $550,000 again in REIT two, we just split it in the middle. We put $275,000 towards parks, $275,000 towards streets, that we'll show you here in a moment. So that's included. We have impact fees. What we did do is, you know, we've already got the budget for 2022. So assuming budget goes as planned, all the items that are listed here for 2022 are already fully funded. So that's what I'm showing here. And then I show a projected beginning fund balance in our Parks capital fund. So that's what the 756 is. Here's behalf of the real estate excise tax, council just recently adopted, updated park impact fees. And assuming that construction does slow down, we are, we had projected 120, I believe, new housing starts for 2022. To be conservative, we drop that to 100 for 2023, 80 for '24, 16 for '25, you get the idea. But we stop at 40 going forward. So we have the floor of 40 housing starts in any given year. And that's reflected in the park impact fees, what we are anticipating there over the next six years. Then there is, you know, we talk about carryover year to year. There is an expectation here, there are some assumptions in this. Grants, our park staff has been fabulous about being able to secure grants from RCO through the legislature, from the county commissioner low, has been very, very helpful for us. So we assume a certain amount of grants to come in. 1.5 million here, we're talking about for North Hill Park. We have, and it's on the six years for the five-year strategic plan that this night mentioned earlier tonight, talked about going out again and asking for a voted park bond come 2025, 2026. When we did that in conjunction with the East County Parks and Recreation District, our voters gave us a very, very clear message that they support parks in town. We saw that with the responses to the surveys for the growth plan update. We saw that in the precinct returns for that park bond request. Unfortunately, that was in 2019, and it included the entire East County Parks and Recreation District. So while it passed with over 60% within all the precincts within the city of Monroe, it did not pass throughout the district. But then COVID hit, so we haven't gone out and asked again for just the city of Monroe. And we want to be careful about when we do that, because we are conscious, as much as people want to support parks, you know, we're looking at it from a big picture standpoint. We're going to be looking at TBD, a renewal of TBD as well. So we want to make sure that the timing is not going to create an undue burden for our taxpayers. But I do want to mention that this model does include a successful bond measure here. So this, what this model does for me, and again, all these numbers are just estimates, the further out we go, is that there are some items that then just do not have funding. And that's what's here in this, I guess it looks more fuchsia on the screen. Those are the items we highlighted in that fuchsia color up here in the six-year CIP. Those are items that, yes, we have along the six-year CIP so that if there are opportunities that come up, we're ready to go. But they would not happen until funding is secured. The other point, though, that I would make is that adding another $275,000 a year of REIT one to this model is not going to get us there. These items would still be unfunded. So again, it goes back to what I mentioned as a spoiler alert at the beginning of my presentation. Using that money towards the municipal campus is not going to change whether we can fund these particular parks projects. Any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Questions, Council?
Thank you. I do recognize I'm growing a lot actually here, so. So then on exhibit six, same drill here, this time though with streets projects. And don't be intimidated by the amount of red on this one. If you collapse all that red, it's really just a couple of projects. But again, we went through, again, we went through, 22 is fully funded. You have a beginning fund balance for 23. You see the half of real estate excise tax was been out. You see the impact fee, the same deceleration with the number of housing starts. Again, consistency between parks and the streets. And then, you know, there is the anticipation that the T V D is renewed for a second, ten-year period. And the recommendation is going to be that part of that money is used to fund a bond to pay for the work that needs to be done on Tierney Place, Oak Street. And if we did that, what we would be looking at is about five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars a year out of the T V D money. We are collecting a little over one point four million a year right now for that two, that point two percent. So we could certainly be able to pay for that bond and still, still do preservation projects. So that's factored in. And then again, we have certain projects here in red. You will notice these first four lines all have to do with the train noise reduction. And council had already made that commitment when this was discussed, I believe it was early last year, that any monies that we spend on noise reduction would be grant funded. So it makes sense that it's down here anyways. These are projects that wouldn't go until we add grants or other funding for them. And then you can see, there is the sidewalk improvements, that's out of two thousand twenty-six. It gives us a few years to try and work with that. But again, my argument is, when you look at the amount that's associated with that, as well as the underground the annual sidewalk development that E D A B's asking for, and that pesky one hundred and ninety-first street extension, all of that, you can see the totals here, we're looking at eight million dollars in twenty-five, you know, five point nine million in twenty-six. Adding that two hundred and seventy-five thousand from REIT One is not going to touch that. So, and that covers your six-year CIP. What's nice is all the priority projects outside of these in red are covered in our existing streets. So again, this gets into why we call this capital facilities funding, because we're looking at all our capital facilities, not just municipal campus. And that makes sense, because we need to look at if we're going to fund the municipal campus, how does that fit with the big picture? So I would reiterate again, these spreadsheets do show, we can do, as long as the estimated costs come in under sixteen and a half million dollars, we can do Phase Two of the municipal campus without new resources and without adversely affecting the rest of our capital. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I turn back to you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hasser. Any other questions from councilmembers? Great job with the presentation, again. All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. We have a need for an executive session. The executive session is, so priced and appropriate, first, our C W forty-two point thirty, point one-ten, subsection one, subsection B, for an initial seven minutes, to begin at eight fifty-one. I will announce any exceptions to, to the executive session. I guess you and the lobbyists, by way of teams, those extensions will be shared in the current meeting that's here while we're going into a separate meeting, which we're going to be in soon. So we are now in the executive session.
Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Starbuck, I have to stand up, you might have a question.
Okay, thank you. And so we're not going into the executive session just yet. Mr. Councilmember Starbuck, go ahead, thank you.
Just wanted to tell you that I, I didn't see a place to go to the executive session, but we were fooling with the computer here, so I may have missed it. So I'm going to go back and look for it if I don't see it. That's why I'm not in the session, okay?
Okay, do you have your email up?
I'm sorry?
Do you have your email up?
Not yet, I have to get out of this to get there.
Okay, thank you, sir. We are now in the executive session, beginning at eight fifty-two, we will return with the final action, thank you. So we're going to wait another ten seconds and start at twenty fifty-nine on the clock. Okay, we're back in our regular session. There's no further business as being, so unless there's objection, we are adjourned. Any objections? We're adjourned. Great, thank you, everybody, thank you.
Thank you, good night.